Hello everyone. In this video, we're gonna talk about contracts. And I think again, it's gonna be beneficial to understand the terminology. So we're gonna focus on the terminology pertaining to contracts. Okay? So let's start with actual communication. That's oral or written communication to the offer, or that the offerer has accepted the offer. Oral or written communication to the offer, or that the offerer has accepted the offer. That's actual communication. So if you have an offer, which may be the buyer submitting an offer, and the offerer, which is the seller, has accepted it, whether it's written or oral communication, it is actual communication. And we're gonna talk about offer and offerer, because those positions can change during the contract position. Okay? So right now, we're saying it's oral or written communication to the offer, or that the offerer has accepted the offer. Actual communication. Then we have actual fraud. That's a deliberate misrepresentation of a material fact. It was made with the intent of inducing the other party to act upon it to one's detriment. And it can be done in words or silence. A deliberate misrepresentation of a material fact made with the intent of inducing the other party to act upon it to one's detriment. Actual fraud. Addendum. That's a page added to a form contract for the purpose of including essential terms or to provide supporting documentation, such as plats or a power of attorney. The addendum should be incorporated into the contract by reference, then initialled and dated by the parties. And it's also called an exhibit. Administrative law. We talked about that in chapter, agency, in the agency chapter. And that's the laws that are passed by elected legislators. Affiliation agreement. The contract a licensee signs when joining a broker or brokerage firm. That's called an affiliation agreement. The contract a licensee signs when joining a broker or brokerage firm. Arbitration. Arbitration is a process of settling disputes whereby the disagreeing parties submit their differences to a neutral third party and agree to be bound by his or her judgment. Remember arbitration. Because arbitration and then we talk about mediation. We're gonna talk about the difference. Arbitration is a process of settling disputes whereby the disagreeing parties submit their differences to a neutral third party and agree to be bound by his or her judgment. Assignee. The person to whom a right or legal interest is transferred. An assignee is the person to whom a right or legal interest is transferred. Then we have an assignment. A legal transfer of one's rights and obligations under a contract to a third party. That's an assignment. A legal transfer of one's rights and obligations under a contract to a third party. Assignor. That is one who transfers a right or legal interest to another. So an assignor transfer their rights to another, and that other would be the assignee. Bilateral contract. A bilateral contract is a contract in which the parties mutually exchange promises binding both to perform. A bilateral contract. A contract in which the parties mutually exchange promises binding both to perform. And you can think about a landlord-tenant. The tenant gets the property, and the landlord gets the rent. A contract in which parties mutually exchange promises binding both parties to perform. Breach of contract, which is also called default. A breach of contract is failure without legal excuse to perform one's obligation under a contract. Failure to fulfill a duty. A breach of contract. Failure without legal excuse to perform one's obligation under a contract. Co-mingling. Co-mingling is mixing funds held in trust with the broker's personal or business accounts. So a broker may have a trust account, which is an account set aside for deposits, earnest money, rental payments, money that does not belong to the broker. Co-mingling is when a broker allows money that does not belong to him to be transferred or deposited into the broker's personal or business account. And this also can be a salesperson. A salesperson would be co-mingling if they took their buyer's earnest money and put it into their personal account. This is co-mingling. Note that this is illegal. Co-mingling. Mixing funds held in trust with the broker's or salesperson's personal account or business account. Consideration. When you see the word consideration in a contract, it's anything of monetary value to introduce another to enter into a contract. Anything of monetary value. Consideration. And you may say, see, in consideration of $10. And then it goes on to describe the parties who are gonna be a part of the contract. So anything of monetary value to introduce, to induce another to enter into a contract. Let me say that one more time, because I stumbled over a word. Consideration is anything of monetary value to induce another to enter into a contract. Constructive communication. That's communication by operation of law. When an offer is made through a courier, such as the mail, the offereer's acceptance is effectively communicated to the offerer when the acceptance is sent, not when it is received by the offerer. Constructive communication. Then we have constructive fraud. Remember we had actual fraud? Now we have constructive fraud. This is the misrepresentation of material facts without intending to deceive or mislead, but involving a breach of duty, such as negligence or carelessness. For example, a broker is negligent in the duty to discover the truth about zoning and unintentionally misleads a prospective purchaser. So constructive fraud is you're misrepresenting material facts. However, those facts could have been found out with further research. That's constructive fraud. You're not doing it to, intending to deceive or mislead. That's constructive fraud. Actual fraud is misrepresentation of material facts with the intention to deceive. Okay? A contract, that's an agreement to do or not to do a particular act or thing which is enforceable by law. For the agreement to be valid and enforceable, it must contain the four elements. Legally competent parties, mutual assent, genuine assent, consideration, and lawful purpose. So we'll add that fifth. Legally competent parties, mutual assent, genuine assent, genuine assent, consideration, lawful purpose, and be in writing when required by law. Corporation. That's a legal entity created under authority of the state. A resolution of the board of directors authorizing certain officers to sign a contract. This is required in order to bind a corporation. Remember, it's the board of directors who authorizes certain officers to sign a contract in a corporation. Counteroffer. A proposal by an offerer to an offeree or made in response to an offer. So the offer may be, I would like to offer $100,000. The offerer comes back with a counteroffer and says, I'll take $105,000. So now the offeree has an option to accept or not accept or continue with the counteroffer process. Counteroffer. A proposal by an offerer to an offeree. So the initial offer is made by the offeree to the offerer. And now the counteroffer is from the offerer to the offeree. Damages. That's loss or injury to a person or property caused by breach of contract. Also, the compensation paid for such loss. Those are damages. Duress. That's the use of force to compel a person to enter into a contract. Duress. The use of force to compel a person to enter into a contract. Earnest money. The purchaser's initial commitment of something of value to indicate that he or she wants to buy the property according to the terms of the offer being submitted. Earnest money deposits received by the broker must be placed in his or her designated trust account until the transaction is either closed or otherwise terminated. Let's talk about an executed contract. A contract in which all parties have fully performed their obligations. So an executed contract means a contract in which all parties have fully performed their obligations. The last thing that takes place in an executed contract is when the deed is signed. After the deed is signed, the contract has then been considered executed. Don't get that mixed up with executory contract. An executory contract is a contract not yet fully performed. Something remains to be done by one or both of the parties. An express contract. That's a contract made orally or in writing. An expressed contract. It can be a contract made orally or in writing. Let's talk about fraud. Fraud is malicious, willful, or neglect, misrepresentation of a material fact in a transaction on which one or more of the parties to the transaction relies and therefore suffers damage. That is considered fraud. We talked about in order to make a contract valid, there were certain things that had to be in there. Genuine assent is one of them. Genuine assent is an essential element of a contract which requires that all parties enter into the contract under their own free will, absent of fraud, misrepresentation, duress, menace, or undue influence. That's genuine assent. We talked about consideration, which was monetary. Good consideration is something without monetary value, which could be love and affection. And that's mostly when we're talking about deeds and heirs and inherited properties that we give to our loved ones. It's given out of love and affection. There's no monetary exchange or value. Implied authority. That's authority of an agent arising from custom rather than expressed agreement. Implied authority. Implied contract. That's a contract in which the promises are not expressed but manifested by the conduct of the parties. Implied contract. That could be an agent showing a buyer properties. It's implied that this agent is representing this buyer, because you're out showing this buyer properties. Implied contract. A contract in which the promises are not expressed but manifested by the conduct of the parties. Now let's talk about land contract. Land contract is also called an installment land contract or contract for deed. And that's a contract in which the buyer typically makes a small down payment, takes possession, pays the taxes, and makes installment payments of principal and interest to the seller until the purchase price is paid in full. The seller retains title until the buyer has paid all installments and otherwise performed under the contract. And we hear those as owner financing. Those are also called land contracts. Liquidated damages. Liquidated damages. A sum of money specified in a contract as compensation to be paid to one of the parties if the other defaults. Liquidated damages. And usually, we use the earnest money. If for whatever the buyer defaults, then the seller may request to have the buyer's earnest money as liquidated damages. Marketable title. That's a title to land which is free from reasonable objections, leaving no doubt as to who the owner is. A title with a title insurance company will insure at its regular rates, subject only to standard exceptions. So a marketable title. Just know that it's a title to land which is free from reasonable objections, leaving no doubt as to who the owner is. It's a marketable title. Meeting of the minds. That's a mutual agreement to the terms and conditions of a contract by all parties involved. Menace. The threat of force to compel someone to enter into a contract against his or her will. That's menace. And then we have minor. And that's a person under legal age or the age of majority. Depending on the particular state, a minor is one under 18 to 21 years of age. A contract made by a minor is voidable. And remember, in that situation, the minor has to want to get out of that contract. It then becomes voidable. Mutual assent. That's an expression of mutual agreement manifested by an unconditional acceptance of all terms and conditions of an offer. Mutual mistake. Is a mistaken assumption made by both parties concerning a material fact of the contract which results in a void contract. Mutual rescission. Cancellation of a contract made voluntarily by all parties involved. Negative fraud. Deliberate misrepresentation by felon to disclose vital information, such as defects that are not readily apparent from a reasonable inspection. Negative fraud is a form of actual fraud. Negligence. Breach of duty resulting from failure to exercise reasonable care required by the circumstances involved in each individual case. That's negligence. Then we have negligent misrepresentation. That's a false statement believed to be true but is made without sufficient grounds for such belief due to carelessness or negligence. When relied upon by another party, it has the same effect as willful misrepresentation and results in constructive fraud. Novation. That's a process of discharging obligations under a contract by substituting a new contract for an existing one or by substituting a new party for an old one. So novation. New. Offer is just a proposal to make a contract. It does not become a legal offer until it comes to the knowledge of the person to whom it is made, known as the offeree. Offer and acceptance. An essential element for the creation of a contract. An essential element for the creation of a contract. Offer and acceptance. Also called mutual assent and a meeting of the minds. The offeree. The party to whom an offer is made. The offeror. The party who makes an offer. Option. A contract which binds one party to hold an offer open to another party for a specified period of time. Peril evidence rule. That's the rule of law disallowing oral evidence which disputes a written agreement. P-A-R-O-L evidence rule. That's the rule of law disallowing oral evidence which disputes a written agreement. Patent defect. One that is readily apparent by an ordinary inspection. Patent is not hidden. It's readily apparent by just an ordinary inspection. You can walk in by just an ordinary inspection. You can walk in and see these things without being told. Puffing, remember what puffing is. Puffing is a statement of exaggeration which a reasonable person would recognize as untrue. Puffing is not illegal. It's a statement of exaggeration which a reasonable person would recognize as untrue. Rescind, to disaffirm or cancel a contract. If a contract has been rescinded, each party is restored to his or her legal and monetar- monetary positions in existence prior to the contract. Rescind is to disaffirm or cancel a contract. That brings each party back to their original state. Right of recension, that's the right to cancel a contract and restore the parties to their original positions. A return to status quo. Right of recit- recision, the right to cancel a contract and restore the parties to their original position. Sales contract or contract of sale or purchase and sale agreement. That is an agreement which binds the buyer and seller of real estate. Specific performance, that's a legal action to force performance of the precise terms of a contract when one party defaults. This remedy of law is available to a seller only if a suit for damages is not adequate. So a buyer can set sue a seller for specific performance. If the suit for damages is not adequate. Statute of frauds, state law which requires that certain contracts must be in writing in order for them to be enforceable in a court of law. Statute of frauds. That's a law that requires contracts to be in writing in order for them to be enforceable. Then we have statute of limitations, that's a state law which limits the amount of time one has to seek a legal remedy when the other party defaults. Survival clause, a contract provision which allows all are part of the agreement to survive the closing and to remain binding on the parties after the deed has been delivered. That's a survival clause. This is a provision in the contract which allows all are part of the agreement to survive the closing and to remain binding on the parties after the deed has been delivered. Time is of the essence. That's a contract provision which makes it essential that all time limits in the agreement be strictly met. Undue influence, that's using a position of trust and confidence to take unfair advantage of another person in order to obtain a contract. That's undue influence. Unenforceable contract, a contract which does not entitle the parties to seek legal, legal remedy upon default because it fails to meet some legal requirement such as the statute of frauds or statute of limitations. A unilateral contract, a contract involving the promise of only one party in exchange for an act of forbearance of another. A contract involving the promise of only one party in exchange for an act or forbearance of another. Only the party making the promise is obligated to perform. That's a unilateral contract. A unilateral recession is when one party to a contract defaults. The injured party notifies the defaulting party that the contract is terminated and offers to return all consideration received. The injured party is then entitled to a return of any consideration paid. Valid contract, a valid that contains all the essential elements of a contract. To be enforceable, it must also be in writing as required by the statute of frauds in each particular state. And that is a Georgia law, statute of frauds is a Georgia law that real estate contracts must be in writing in order to be enforceable. Valuable consideration, money or anything of a monetary value such as property, service, or forbearance when received as a benefit by one party resulting from a detriment suffered by another. A void contract, a contract which has no legal effect because one or more essential elements of a contract is not present. A void contract under the law never existed. So remember, a void contract was never a contract at all. A voidable contract, a contract that appears valid and enforceable on its face but is subject to recision by the party or parties acting under a disability. So that's when we talked about um the landlord entering into a contract with a minor. If the landlord finds out that it's a minor, there's nothing the landlord can do. If the minor decides to say, I'm a minor, I don't want to rent this property anymore, give me all my rent and my deposit, then the contract can be voidable. But it has to be rescinded by the injured party or the party under a disability. That's a voidable contract. And then waste, waste is a misuseful, the willful misuse, destruction or neglect of real estate by a person rightfully in possession that results in a decrease in value of the premise. So let's say that there's a tenant in the property and they completely destroy the property. That is considered waste. Willful misuse, destruction, or neglect of real property by a person rightfully in possession that results in a decrease in value of the premises. So go over those um terms and understand those terms and maybe um if you have to go through and just look up um in your real estate book, some examples that'll kind of further help you understand those terms. But I'm giving you the basis of um the terms that are pretty much covered in the section of contracts. See you at the next video.